They're identical. I just do it just in case you don't agree. Okay, I won't do that anymore. I'll have your face.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call our meeting together, our consolidated agenda, and we're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera is in Washington DC attending a RISWA conference on behalf of the city. So, the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led tonight by, how about our city manager, Patrick Johnson?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff's, yeah, and... Oh, okay. Okay, we'll do that, okay. All right, so, our Brown Act, notice of simultaneous meeting compensation. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous medians, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. The next thing we have is the approval of the agenda by city manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda, however, we are waiting on one of the presenters for the presentation, so I might suggest that we go with the consent calendar first and then come back to presentations to give the presenter time to get here.
Okay. On the consent calendar, the recommendations on our consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the city clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the consent calendar. So, I don't have anything removed from the public out there. Is there something removed from our council members? Okay, item five will be pulled. Okay, if there's nothing else pulled, I would look for a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, please, cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Aguilera excused. Okay, then the next thing we'll do is our number C5, agreement for the production and distribution of the city newsletter and our rec guide. So, Councilmember Franklin pulled that, so would you like to have the floor and explain?
My inquiry on this item relates to the fact that we did have a Vista company that bid on this item, and they were, their price was, though their bid was non-responsive based on the fact that their equipment can only produce a document instead of the RFP asked for eight and a half by 11, they can produce a document that is one eighth of an inch different in size by one dimension, one and a half inch different in size by the other dimension, so it's almost an identical size. And in fact, they're the printer of our Vista Chamber of Commerce monthly magazine. So, given the fact that they're a Vista company and that their price to produce a similar product would be about 25% less, maybe it's more like 23% less, I wanted to examine this issue and ask if there was some way that we might perhaps not proceed with this. One solution that came to my mind is that perhaps the city manager, there is an impetus to act today to authorize the printing of the summer issue of the rec guide, and that action needs to take place so that we have sufficient time to print and distribute it. But my suggestion is that perhaps we might authorize the city manager to proceed under his discretion with the printing of a single issue, which would give us sufficient time to amend the RFP to allow our Vista companies to compete for the bid, and then we might consider the lowest qualified bidder at a future on another RFP. I don't know if that's the best course of action. I'm open to, you know, I'm open to any kind of thoughts on that from the city manager. We had a brief opportunity, but not an extended opportunity, to discuss this earlier.
I think that, based on your suggestion, I think the current low bidder, the PM group, gave us a price based on a three-year contract, so I'm not sure if their existing price would stay for a one-time issue versus a one-year or a three-year deal. So, I'm not sure of that information at this time.
Yeah. It is my thought, and obviously I can't prove it, but it is my thought with some expertise in the issue of printing, that the, if it's legal and within your authority and if it makes sense to do, I feel that the Vista company would probably produce a single issue at the price that they submitted in their bid. Again, I don't know if that's appropriate. I only have a minute to consult our city attorney on whether that's all legal and appropriate, but I was just trying to think, how could we make sure that our Vista companies get included and have an opportunity to compete and bid and we keep our tax dollars in our city?
And I would just add one other thing. I'm not sure if you print that on a smaller, you're going to have to redo all the artwork. I mean, just because I've been in the printing business a lot of times too, we have to redo all the artwork because it would be, I don't know, the pages and things, so I don't know if that's, I don't want to hold up the different programs that we're trying to get kids into by holding up that magazine. So, Councilmember Cody also had a question.
I did. This is a question for staff, and just a little background on this issue. My understanding, looking at this, and I think my understanding is why the Vista company is non-responsive, is they're going to use a different printing equipment, probably web printed, is that correct?
That's right. That's correct. Their equipment couldn't print the product as we specified in the bid proposal.
Right. And in addition to that, it would be a different paper spec and a different quality, to a small degree for the printing process than what we've used since 2008?
I believe so. I'd have to defer to, our communications officer would be precise on that, but I believe so.
You know, I definitely understand your concern with utilizing a Vista company, but one of the things that I'm very cautious of doing and very cognizant of in the printing industry is trying to do a one-off run. We're going to lose a lot of the cost savings potential by trying to bypass our bid process to go to a single-issue print run, and by the time we spec that out, price it, it's going to be very difficult to get that out on schedule, I would imagine.
Yeah, that's true. And if we do bypass our bid process and change that, I think the more appropriate thing, and I'd leave it up to the city attorney, would be to reject all the bids tonight going forward as opposed to trying to do a one-issue or a partial contract and then trying to rebid it. We might have a challenge the other way, but I'd leave that to the city attorney.
Well, I guess a question for the city attorney would be too. What's the legality of getting this far down the process with the bids that we have from the responsive bidders and rejecting it and going back out to an initially non-responsive bidder? Is that something that they could challenge going forward?
Want to clarify, it would be scrapping this entire RFP and all the responses and issuing a new RFP under a slightly different amended...
That's right. The only, the appropriate way to make any changes at this point would be to reject all bids and simply go out and rebid it. Obviously, for a single print, a one-off contract could be done, but you have two potential issues, one of which Councilman Campbell mentioned, which is it obviously could affect the overall pricing, and the second of which is, of course, speculative, but in situations in the past where similar situations have arisen, sometimes your low bidders don't bother to bid the second time. There's no guarantee that you'll get a range of bidders again as you have this time.
And I will say, and you mentioned it, Councilman Franklin, if we reject all the bids, the issue with this one for the spring/summer issue, it has our rec guide in it, and so that's, the timing is critical to be able to get people to sign up for programs. If we did reject the bids, or if the council elected to reject the bids and we went back out, it's not likely that we would have a rec guide out probably until the end of May, I would guess, by the time we go through the bidding process, bring it to the city council, and then award the agreement, so.
I might add the programs, sign up for day camp, wave, swim lessons, moonlight season, all those things are coming up in April when it would be coming out, and so we'd potentially lose a lot of customers.
One other question I'd ask with regard to this company that we've been working with. Have they been very responsive to our needs in terms of scheduling and timelines and producing everything on time?
Very responsive. We've been very happy with them.
One of the things that I would agree with Councilman Franklin on is that sometimes when we put things out to bid, especially with printing, changing the specification just a small amount can reduce the cost substantially. So, going forward in the future, I would like to see the option, to see what the pricing would be for the modified spec, because I'm very familiar with producing catalog and magazine printing on different web presses, and certain companies just do not have the capability to produce an eight and a half by 11 size, but they can reduce the size a little bit. But going forward on other projects in the future, I'd like to see that option included. But in this particular case, I think that the prior history we have with the company, their pricing is substantially lower than the other responsive bidders, and their good work that they've done with the city in the past is a reason that I will be supporting moving this forward tonight.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I borrow this? I'm looking at the one that you used as an example, that the Vista Chamber of Commerce uses the company that Councilwoman Franklin brought up. And this is a high-quality, very nice-looking magazine that we all look at every month. The company that was non-responsive, and I don't know the name of the company, I don't know who it is, but have they bid on this project before in the other times that it has gone out to RFP?
I don't believe so.
And then they were deemed to be non-responsive merely because they weren't able to do the size specifications?
Correct.
Now, did we know that, I mean, when they sent their bid back, we knew that they weren't going to meet the size specifications, correct?
When we opened the bids at that time, yes.
We knew that.
We realized, but not before we received the bids, but at the time.
Right.
We opened them.
Now...
That's why they were disqualified, because there was a variance.
Well, my question is, just tell me if you can do this or not. But once you get that back, and they're a Vista company that has good standing in the community with the quality of their work, is there no way to say, hey, guys, is there a reason you can't do this? Or, I agree with Councilman Franklin, I would like to see us give our business and our city taxpayer money to a city business, and if there was no way that we could have worked with them to produce our magazine as well?
I think, you know, once the bid specs are out, unless we modify them during that time period, then they have to adhere to the bid specs. In the future, we could offer an optional sizing for pricing purposes, but in this case, once the bid specs were put out, everybody's playing by those rules, so it would be unfair to have somebody else be able to come in with a smaller-sized sheet that may cost them less, and that's why they were rejected, I don't know if...
I would make one other observation. Certainly, in the case of the routine bidding process, bidders who review the specifications will ask questions and ask if changes could be made had this company, when they got the bid, said,
Right.
"We can't produce it. Is there any chance you could change the specifications" prior to the bids being received and opened, we would at least have an opportunity to consider that possibility.
And they didn't give that.
But they didn't say anything and simply submitted a non-responsive bid.
So, I know that when that does happen in a bid process, if somebody calls and asks questions, then those answers are given to all of the bidders, correct, in a fair process?
Correct.
But they never came up and asked for the opportunity?
Correct.
I agree, we should keep the business in the city, but we're on such a timeline now, and to have to start the process over, I would be very hesitant because we would lose, it would be detrimental to the Parks and Rec program for the summer, I think.
Would be.
It's a tough one.
So, okay, Councilmember Franklin, followed by Councilmember Campbell again.
I just wanted to bring the issue up, and, because that was worth mentioning, and so many spending decisions, the council doesn't have any kind of review process over. So, you know, I think it's important for us to comment on it when we do have the opportunity. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to hold the, I don't want to hold the process up on this, but I remember the other thing I wanted to say was, I want to make sure that, you know, if we can, if we can reach out and be a little bit, provide a little bit of assistance to Vista companies, you know, say, hey, is this spec match something that you can do? You know, I want to make sure that we're not unfairly advantaging anybody in the process. But I guess what I would think is, I wouldn't want to preclude a Vista company who could do the work at a quality that would be acceptable at a price that may be the best price available to us simply because they weren't the most savvy in the bid proposal process, and that may have been the case here. They may not have realized. So, it's just a suggestion in general that we may, you know, find the opportunity in the future to reach out to a Vista company that we know could offer a qualifying bid. In this case, it didn't take a lot of work to come across this one. It's just a thought. For other things, maybe we could keep our eye out, but, you know, for tonight, I would move that we approve C5 on the basis of the timeline that's before us.
Councilmember Campbell?
I'll second that motion. No further comment.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously with the Councilmember Aguilera excused. Did Captain Amy Mangan get here ever? I'm looking back there. Okay, then we'll go forward, I guess, with the presentation with the AAA, so, I'm going to go down here then. This time, I'd like to just have, if she comes here with Highway Patrol, but I'd like to have Deputy Tyler Eichmann, Vista Captain Larry Nesbit come forward, and Vista Deputy Tyler Eichmann, oh, I just said that, and Sher Cardone, the branch manager of AAA. I'm going to read this because I'm going to look at this. Okay. Look how cute is that? Okay. Okay, "It's my pleasure to be here today to recognize an individual officer for his outstanding achievement in auto theft recovery." I'm kidding. "I'd like to express the gratitude of our members, insured, and general motoring public for their valuable contribution. Your work helps reduce financial costs incurred by the society because of vehicle theft crimes. An excellent example of our savings is your report that represents the motorists is evident in the 2014 vehicle theft statistics. During this past year, vehicles valued at approximately $63,300 were stolen. Approximately 88% of those vehicles recovered. This exempts a tremendous service and economic savings you provide to the motorists. The 10-851 award was developed to honor officers such as yourself who make a significant contribution in the recovery of stolen vehicles and arrests of suspects. You're receiving this award today because you've met this threshold." And this is where it's interesting to me, because I don't understand a lot of this. In some cases, the basic criteria is make six separate incident rolling stolen in custody arrests, or recover a total of 12 stolen vehicles, which a minimum of three must be rolling stolen, or develop information that results in identification of theft ring, subsequent arrests, and two or more suspects in recovery in the last 10 vehicles." Let's see. And I have the actual statistics, which I think was just amazing. The ROs, the rollers, were three. The ARs, which abandoned stolen vehicles, were nine, and arrests were three as well, so that's amazing. Again, $63,300. I thought that was fantastic. So, on behalf of the Almobes Club of Southern California, I'd like to present this award to, let me get over here. Here we go, Deputy Tyler Eichmann.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna move on to our public hearing. So this is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Vista Development Code, Chapter 18, Point 38, C1 Zone, to allow residential care facilities for the elderly with a special use permit. First, we're gonna hear the staff report, and then the public will have an opportunity to comment. Those wishing to speak should present their speaker slips to the city clerk, and then when I call your name, please come forward to the podium and speak directly into the microphone for no longer than three minutes. So with that, John Conley, our Director of Community Development, will give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an amendment to the C1 Commercial Zone to incorporate a new special use category, that is a residential care facility for the elderly. The definition is in the Health and Safety Code. Basically defines it as a housing development that would serve a population of 60 or older and provide some level of care, so your typical type of care facility. Amending the code requires a recommendation by the Planning Commission. We went to the Planning Commission in January to receive a recommendation. There were no public speakers. The commission agreed with the staff recommendation to amend the code. We're asking to amend the C1 Zone to allow with a special use permit, which means we would have discretionary approval, authority over any of those projects that came forward if this motion were approved. Residential care facilities for the elderly is a use that's been considered at a number of places within the city. It's currently only allowed in residential zones. Because of the changing commercial market and some of the difficulty that we've had seeing new retail development come in, we always look at new and different uses that might fit in the commercial zones and still provide some benefit to the city. With respect to this use, the staff believes that it would be consistent with the general plan policies to create more flexibility in the types of uses that we evaluate in commercial zones, and it would respond to the changing market conditions that are currently happening with respect to commercial property. It also provides an option to locate these uses near commercial goods where seniors could access those goods, and it would result in minimal traffic generation since these projects typically don't generate high levels of traffic. And for those reasons, the staff is recommending an ordinance to amend the C1 Zone to allow residential care facilities for the elderly as a special use category, and that completes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't have any public speakers at this time. Do I have any? No. Okay. So then, I guess we'll open it to the council members. Do you have any questions of staff? Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have we had anybody express interest in this, put an application in or talk to staff about putting a care facility in the industrial areas?
There is one, all of the areas that are zoned C1 are shown in orange in the slide here. The area down off of Sycamore, which is this area, is, we have had some requests to accommodate this type of use on that property. Because the zoning doesn't allow it, we indicated it would require, you know, a zone change, and they'd have to go through that whole process as part of an application, and so far, no one's really wanted to take that risk. But we believe there are a number of commercially zoned properties in the city that would be a good fit for this use, which is why the staff brought this proposed change forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell? And I did say the public hearing is open, right? Did I say that?
I'd like to move that we close the public hearing and adopt the zone amendment for the C1 Zone.
I'll second that.
Okay, C, no further discussion? Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Aguilar excused. Okay, after that, hold on here. That takes us to oral communications, and I really don't have any speaker slips or any oral communications either, so we'll go to remarks. I'll start with Councilmember Campbell tonight.
No comments this evening.
Councilmember Franklin? Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to the city manager and all the city staff for your support in February for the Red, for the American Heart Health Month and turning the fountain here at City Hall red. We got some positive comments and some positive feedback from press and the community on that, and it was really very nice to see that the city was participating and sponsoring and supporting a healthy Vista. So I appreciate that very, very much. I also wanted to say thank you for the traffic division. I live off of Pomelo Drive, and I noticed the new striping over there, and I wondered what it was about, because I hadn't seen striping like that before. And there have been quite a few incidents over there with cars. It's a narrow road. And I just wanted to say that was a very creative thing to do, to stripe it that way, to bring some more attention and awareness to the drivers, to be aware of the cars parked there and not side swipe, and some mirrors had been taken off. So that's just a very creative and innovative way to use all of the tools in the toolbox, and I just want to commend you for doing that and say thank you for that, and I look forward to hearing a report on that in six months about how that has worked to reduce some of the damage in that area on that road. So thank you for doing that. And as always, just thank you very much to staff for all that you do for us.
Okay. I have a few little things here. Local financial planners are gonna show families how to get more financial aid, grants, and scholarships at Vista Library's College Financial Planning Workshop. That's this Saturday, March the 14th, at 1:00, and you can call the library at 760-431-1246 for a reservation. And coming up, the Fourth Annual North County St. Patrick's Day Parade and Festival is this Sunday, March 15th, in downtown Vista. It runs from 10:00 in the morning till 4:00 p.m., and the parade begins at 11:00. There'll be live Irish music, a street fair, and children's activities, and more information is available on that at the VVVA, Vista Village Business Association, but it's VVVA.org. And one last thing, there's free tax help. I could use some tax help. It's available at the senior center, and you can register appointments there by calling the 760-639-6160. And those are my announcements, and the city manager, Patrick Johnson, might have a few.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one. The city is still accepting applications for various commissions, so if you're interested in volunteering with the city, we'd appreciate you submitting an application. You can see the city clerk here after the meeting, or you can go online at cityofvista.com and look at the front page and see what applications we have. Thank you.
City Attorney, any comments tonight?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
City Clerk, Marcy Killian? No? Okay. With that, I have no more comments.